Good evening and thank you for joining tonight's Telephone Town Hall hosted by the Jefferson County Board of Commissioners. I'm Roger and I'll be your moderator tonight. Tonight, we'll have a conversation with Commissioners Andy Kerr, Tracy Kraft Tharp, and Leslie Dahl Kemper about the state of Jefferson County, specifically the county's initiative to update land use, wildfire, and evacuation planning and regulations, housing and homelessness initiatives, and where American Rescue Plan Act funds are being deployed. Before we begin, let me tell you a little bit about how the call works. Although tonight's discussion will focus mainly on those three topics, feel free to ask about the issues that are most important to you. If you're listening on the phone, if you're on the phone and would like to ask a question, please press star three on your phone. You'll be transferred to an operator who will take down some basic information and get you in the queue. You'll be able to listen to the call until you're asked a question, so please press star now to get in the queue early. We'll take just a moment for each Commissioner to give a short introduction before we jump into our topics. So first, I'd like to turn it over to Commissioner and Chair of the Board, Andy Kerr. Commissioner, go ahead.
Thank you, Roger. I'm Andy Kerr and I represent District Two, the central part of Jefferson County, including Wheat Ridge, parts of Lakewood, Golden, and Evergreen up into the mountains. I am a former Jefferson County Social Studies teacher. I served in both the State Senate and the State House, and I grew up right here in Jefferson County. Tonight's conversation will cover a few important topics along with any other issues you may have questions or comments about. We've allotted time for you to share your thoughts during each topic section, and there will be a portion toward the end where we'll take any additional comments and answer questions. Just press star three at any time to ask a question or give feedback. We'd love to hear your thoughts. Before we introduce my fellow Commissioners, I'd like to allow some time for our brand-new county manager, Joe Kirby, to introduce himself and give us a feel for what he plans to address in the coming weeks and months.
Thank you, Commissioner Kerr. It's a pleasure to be with you this evening. I'm very excited to join Jefferson County, and I've been very impressed with the team. I've been in this role now for a big week and a half, so... But I do have a long history in the state of Colorado, serving in local governments, both urban as well as rural, as well as many different sizes of local governments, both in Colorado, Kansas, and most recently Oregon. My wife and I were ecstatic to have the opportunity to return to Colorado and join Jefferson County, and I look forward to working with the Board of Commissioners and the team here at Jefferson County. Relative to the areas of focus over the short term, first of all, I'm here to listen and learn. That's number one. Number two is to really get to know the organization as well as the community. And number three is to really focus on developing relationships, both inside and outside the organization. So there's a little bit about me and what I intend to do over the first 90 days that I'm here. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. I know I speak for my fellow Commissioners and staff when I say, "Welcome to Jefferson County."
Thank you, Commissioner, and welcome, Joe. Next, we have Commissioner Tracy Kraft Tharp. Commissioner, go ahead.
Thank you, Roger. I'm Tracy Kraft Tharp, and I'm from District One, which is the north area of the county. That would include Arvada, parts of Golden, and of course, the Jefferson County part of Westminster. Pleased to be serving as a county commissioner. Prior to being here, I worked at Family Tree, running the Bad Women Shelter and the Adolescent Crisis Shelter, served in the legislature for eight years, so excited to participate in this call tonight. Thanks, Roger.
All right, and finally, we have Commissioner Leslie Dahl Kemper. Commissioner, go ahead.
Roger, thanks so much. I really appreciate it. I'm Leslie Dahl Kemper, and I want to just say thanks to everyone tuning into tonight's Town Hall. It's great to have you here. I represent District Three, that's South Jeffco, which includes Littleton, Morrison, Conifer, as well as portions of Lakewood and Evergreen. Our family has called Jeffco home for almost 30 years, and it's a real honor to serve in my second term as your county commissioner. Before serving on the Board of County Commissioners, I was elected to the Jeffco School Board and served as the School Board President. I've worked as a journalist. I've owned a small communications firm doing national work, and I've also served in senior executive roles in both the nonprofit and private sectors. Again, if you have a question or a comment, please press star three.
All right, thank you, Commissioner. To kick off the conversation tonight, we'll turn it over to Commissioner Kerr. Commissioner, before you start, let me remind people to press star three on their phone to get in the queue to ask a question. Go ahead, Commissioner.
Thanks, Roger. So first, let's welcome Avell Montoya, Jefferson County's Director of Development and Transportation, to discuss a major initiative the county is undertaking. With the increase in the frequency and severity of wildfires in Colorado, Jefferson County has made it a priority to be as proactive as possible in combating these disasters, including a project that seeks to streamline efforts across departments to create a more cohesive vision for the future of our county.
That's right, Commissioner Kerr. Last spring, the Board of County Commissioners approved allocating funds from the American Rescue Plan Act to help combat wildfires and protect Jeffco residents and structures. This included a portion to be used for updating the Comprehensive Master Plan, our Community Wildfire Protection Plan, Comprehensive Emergency Management Plan, with an evacuation annex with our Sheriff's Office, and county land use regulations. In addition, the county will be updating our transportation master plan during this process. Several of the recommendations came directly from our Jeffco Wildfire Task Force. Earlier this month, the Board approved a contract with consultant Logan Simpson to manage the Plans and Regulations Project, officially kicking off the county's efforts to update its plans regarding wildfire protection, evacuations, development, and transportation.
And by updating all these plans and regulations at the same time, this initiative will really help integrate land use, wildfire, and evacuation planning and policies. So priorities really do get aligned across the county. So this Plans and Regulations Update Project will also take into account recommendations from the 15-year Housing Plan as well as recommendations from recently adopted plans, like the Climate Action Plan and Forest Health Plan. Our hope is to have all proposed updates and changes coming from this project adopted within 18 to 24 months.
This project also allows for a robust public outreach process. We are taking steps to be as inclusive and transparent as possible, including creating an online presence and scheduling in-person and virtual meetings in both English and Spanish. Residents will be able to share their opinions and participate in public workshops, surveys, and open houses once this project officially kicks off later this spring. Anyone interested in staying up to date on this process is encouraged to sign up for the Engage Jeffco newsletter on our website, which is www.jeffco.us. Additionally, our Planning and Zoning website will be updated with information on how to participate in the coming weeks.
All right, thank you both. Let's take some questions from the listeners. And again, as a reminder, you can participate in the discussion by pressing star three on your telephone. We're going to start off with Jim. Go ahead, Jim. Whoops, hold on, Jim. We're having a little technical difficulties. Let's try it again. There you go. Go ahead, Jim. You're live.
Okay, okay. Can you hear me now?
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
Okay, fine. Yeah, Commissioner Kerr, we spoke back when the legislature was considering the bill to require large counties to have five commissioners instead of three, and you said you supported that idea and that if the legislature didn't pass that bill, that you would consider getting the... or voting with the commissioners to put it on the ballot for November so that we could... voters could have a chance to decide to have five commissioners instead of three. And my question obviously is, are you going to follow through on that, what you told me?
Yeah, thanks, Jim, for the question, and thank you for the discussion that you and I have had on this. And as we talked about, that the bill itself wasn't quite ready for primetime, at least according to the House Committee it went through. We are interested. I do believe in the idea that people should be represented at the local level in a robust way, and I do believe that at some point, Jefferson County should move from three commissioners to five commissioners. Each commissioner would then represent fewer people and, in my mind, be closer to the people they represent. There are several ways of moving that forward. At this point, we don't have anything definitive. We do know that this would be a cost to the county. At this point, we're looking at what those costs would be. We do know that it would be in the hundreds of thousands of dollars. And with the budget issues that we have at this time, it is still really up in the air. So it remains to be seen whether now is a good time to do this or if this is something that we should get the budget fixed first before we move with something like that. Thank you.
All right, Jennifer, you're next. Go ahead.
Hello, can you hear me?
We sure can.
Okay, great. I'm going to ask the Commissioners, what are your plans around addressing the short-term rental issues and crisis that are specific to unincorporated Jefferson County?
That is a great question. Thank you for asking that. As you may be aware, Colorado in general is looking at short-term rental regulations in each of the municipalities and counties, including Jefferson County. We have started on this journey of exploring what amended regulations for short-term rentals would be. We have had a series of public meetings to gather input and make suggestions on what regulations could be. We're continuing this effort. We're not complete with our work. We are planning on having a series of new public meetings in the near future. Some may be as early as April or May, and certainly throughout the rest of the year as we develop regulations. Once those regulations are put in place, there will be public hearings before our Planning Commission and Board of County Commissioners, and we will continue to solicit feedback along the way. We do want to make sure that there are parties responsible, should there be issues, at short-term rentals. So that's something that we're exploring to see if that's something that the staff can handle or if we can seek outside third parties to help administer that program as well. So stay tuned. Thanks again for the question.
All right, let's go to Kelly next. Kelly, what's your question?
Hi, it's a multi-part question. You guys mentioned fire mitigation and forest health. I live up in Conifer. I was very disturbed last year that they were going in and fire mitigating park areas and trail areas during the springtime, early summer, when the birds have nested, and we've had a significant drop in the avian species, even more so now with this bird virus. So what would be... the first question, what would be a better time of year? Have you consulted with environmental biologists to understand when the birds are... hatchlings are coming for mitigation purposes? And further, forest health, they're talking about the bike send park that they want to put up here on trust land. Federal protections for some of the habitat that we have up here, when you fire mitigate, you're taking down the dead trees. Well, the dead trees are also homes to the woodpeckers, which are interstate...
Commissioner Dahl Kemper, would you like to respond to that?
You bet. And Kelly, let me take the last part of your question first, and then just a moment, we're going to go to Tom Hoby, who heads Jeffco Open Space and Parks, to talk a little bit more about your question regarding the timing of mitigation, which is a really critical tool, one of several that we use to reduce wildfire risk in Jefferson County. The Commissioners at this time can't comment on the bike ranch, but we do appreciate hearing your input on this issue, and we'll certainly share it with Planning and Zoning, given the quasi-judicial role that we play and that because this issue will come before the Board of County Commissioners as well. I really appreciate your question on mitigation. It is a crucial tool in reducing wildfire risk, and I'd love to turn it over to Tom Hoby to briefly respond to the timing issue that you had talked about and habitats. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Dahl Kemper, and Kelly, thank you for your question. We do have very careful prescriptions for any kind of forest health or fire mitigation work that we do on Jeffco Open Space Parks. We consider nesting seasons, the aesthetics, time of year that we do that kind of work, and we'd be happy to talk more with you about the specifics of that. If you'd like, feel free to contact us through jeffco.usopen space. Thank you for the question.
Thank you, Tom. Great questions so far. We're going to get back to your questions in a few minutes. And again, if you would like to get in the queue, press star three on your phone. Let's go back now to Commissioner Tracy Kraft Tharp about housing and homelessness in Jefferson County.
Thank you, Roger. This is really a good conversation because I know there's a lot of questions that are coming up about homeless. Housing and homelessness concerns reach every single corner in Jefferson County. In a 2020 survey, Jeffco residents indicated that the biggest challenges they face in terms of housing include rent increasing past the point of affordability and the struggle to pay existing rent or mortgage obligations. And more than 40% of people said they would like to change their housing situation, but they're unable to do so due to the lack of affordable apartments or homes. So right now, we have Kat Douglas, our Director of Housing, Economic, and Employment Services, and she'll speak about our 15-year Housing Plan that aims to address many of these concerns. Hey, Kat, thanks for joining us.
Thank you, Commissioner Kraft Tharp. In 2020, the county's Comprehensive Master Plan established a set of housing goals that includes, among other things, promoting well-planned, sustainable residential neighborhoods, ensuring a diverse array of affordable housing, providing housing options to accommodate a growing aging population. With these goals in mind, Jefferson County recently sought proposals for a 15-year Comprehensive Housing Plan to address the growing needs of our community.
So this consultant will work with key local, regional, and state stakeholders with the intention of garnering a better understanding of the economic and housing issues that face Jeffco residents. With that analysis, they will design a 15-year Comprehensive Housing Plan with specific goals in relation to the housing needs of our community and addressing the gaps across that housing continuum. The proposed 15-year Comprehensive Plan will also incorporate a racial impact study to determine the effects housing and land use policies have on our communities of color.
The 2020 study Commissioner Kraft Tharp talked about just a moment ago found that Black, Latinx, and Native American households have disproportionate needs compared to Jefferson County as a whole. Respondents experiencing homelessness were more likely to be a member of a minority racial or ethnic group. And in 2018, homeownership rates among Asian, Latinx, and African-American communities were below the Jeffco average of 70%. The goal of this racial impact study is to reduce, eliminate, and prevent discrimination and inequities for Black, Indigenous, and persons of color BIPOC communities in Jefferson County.
So along with looking forward toward a more sustainable housing situation for the county, we remain diligent in our obligations to those experiencing homelessness right now here in Jefferson County. Presently, the county allocates staffing and resources in several ways to combat homelessness. Kat?
We also work with Saffron municipalities across Jefferson County to deploy strategies to combat homelessness, including street outreach, safe parking, and interim housing. We recognize we have more work to do, especially in serving our chronic homeless population with acute mental health and substance use disorders who are not reflected in the severe weather shelter population. That's why we're working with a consultant to determine what did and did not work during recent severe cold weather snaps and how we address gaps while working in collaboration with our cities. Our goal is to deepen the cooperation and communication with our city partners, to build trust and relationships with people who might not otherwise seek assistance, and to work to meet the basic needs of those unsheltered.
Our work on the homelessness and housing fronts is unfinished, but Jefferson County remains steadfast in our efforts to prevent and end homelessness whenever possible. And when it can't be prevented, to ensure it's a rare brief experience. Kat, thank you so much for all your great information. Hey, Roger, back to you.
All right, let's go back to our audience and take some more questions. Again, star three to get in the queue and ask your question. We're going to hear first from Joy. Joy, go ahead.
Thank you. I live in a privately owned... Can you hear me? Hang on.
We can, yep. We can hear you now.
Okay, good. Thank you. I live in a privately-owned apartment complex, but I have a housing voucher, which is fine. But I'm concerned about being able to stay here. Do you have any comments on situations like this?
Hi, Joy. This is Kat Douglas again with the Housing, Economic, and Employment Services Division. We do have resources that can help with rent assistance, and then we also have some resources that can help you navigate more long-term housing options, if that's what you're concerned about. If you're looking for rent assistance, I would encourage anyone looking for this to go to the Jefferson County's webpage for emergency assistance, COVID-19 assistance. We do have two partners in our community right now that can help with emergency support for rent. The Action Center, which can be reached at 303-237-7704, and Family Tree at 303-467-2604. Please reach out to Department of Human Services. You can specifically reach out to me and find my name, Kat Douglas, and I'd be happy to talk to you about other resources that we can help you with.
Kat, do you want to repeat those phone numbers real quick for folks?
Absolutely. The Action Center at 303-237-7704, and Family Tree, 303-467-2604.
All right, thank you. Peggy, you're next. Go ahead. What's your question?
Yes, my question had to do with these guns in school shootings. And I'm just wondering, I had a stranger I was talking to the other day, and he was saying that there's all thousands and thousands of veterans out there who would be willing to volunteer to protect our schools, you know, using one veteran in the morning and one veteran in the afternoon. Have you heard of that possibility, and has it been researched at all?
Hey, Peggy, this is Tracy Kraft Tharp. Wow, thanks so much for bringing this creative idea to our attention. So it's a little confusing because Jefferson County Public Schools and Jefferson County Government are not the same entity. So in fact, the school district is a totally separate governmental entity, and they're... don't work... we don't work with them in our building. But I would really encourage you to give them a call or send them an email. And if you can't connect with them, connect with us, and we will pass on that information to them. But hey, thanks for taking the time to bring that idea to us.
All right, Bob, your turn next. Go ahead.
A simple question and then a little longer one. The street paving in Applewood was stopped abruptly three years ago on certain streets, and we were told it would be done a year later. Well, that's... we're three years down the road, and it still hasn't been done. Is there any hope of getting the few streets in Applewood that need that paving accomplished this year?
Hi, Bob. This is Brian Knight. I'm the pavement project manager for Road and Bridge. And it's funny you mention Applewood because that's where we are starting this season. You can also reach out for specifics. You can get ahold of us, JeffersonCounty.us, our Road and Bridge website. I'll have our schedule on there, and our queue alert is the new Jefferson County Citizen Engagement Platform. You can reach out and ask specific questions about your road or whatever, and I can look that up and let you know.
Thank you, Brian. Nicole, you're next. Thanks for your patience. Go ahead.
Hi, I just live in Colorado, I guess Jefferson County, over in the foothills. And my question is in regards to open space. We've been tasked with doing fire mitigation work at our house, and I've noticed specific parks such as Deer Creek and Reynolds Park haven't had any work done. So I was just wondering, you know, what's going on with those?
Hi, Nicole. This is Leslie. Thanks so much for your question. We really appreciate it. You know, mitigation is such an important part of reducing wildfire risk, as well as making sure our forests are healthy. Jeffco Open Space is strategic and targeted and also works with private landowners. I want to bring Tom Hoby back with Jeffco Open Space to talk a little bit more about that. Tom?
Thanks, Commissioner, and then thanks for the question, Nicole. We're doing quite a bit of work in various Jeffco Open Space parks that are really prescribed as part of our Forest Health Plan that the Commissioners recently adopted. We have done work in the areas that you're talking about. At Beaver Ranch Park, at Meyer Ranch Park, we're currently doing work at Elk Meadow, planning to do work at Alderford Three Sisters. We've also done quite a bit of work at Flying Jay Ranch. Our plan of attack is to... is really to treat the most severe risk areas, the areas that would benefit most from treatment. So we will get to those areas in priority according to our Forest Health Plan. And you can view that document again at jeffco.usopen space. And if you look at Plans and Projects, if you go to that tab and pull that down, you can get to the Forest Health Plan and review that. Thank you for the question.
All right, thank you. We're going to hear next from Mr. Myrent. Go ahead.
Hey, guys. How are we doing today? So my first question is basically this. So I'm a plumber, and I do affordable housing. I've been building affordable housing pretty much nonstop for the past couple of years. But unfortunately, I don't actually qualify for it, and I've been having a hard time just trying to get housing. I ruined my credit score just to keep from being homeless. But unfortunately, your guys'... I would say, standards for your income have ruined a lot of opportunity for me and people like me. Is there any possibility that we could maybe raise that gap up from $12,000 to maybe $30,000? Because if you make over, I think it was like 18 or something, or 12, you are kind of out on your own. And as a resident, so I feel like I have been abandoned. Is there any possibility you guys in the future maybe see this happening?
Hi, Mr. Myrent. This is Kat Douglas again with the Housing, Economic, and Employment Services Division. I completely understand your situation. Unfortunately, those rules around affordable housing eligibility are set by the federal government. We do agree that with the current housing costs that we are seeing more and more residents like yourself struggle. We are here to help. We do have a page on our Jefferson County webpage with Housing Assistance Resources that can offer support. I'd also... I'm also happy to talk to anybody that is looking for additional supports or ideas on how to maintain and attain stable housing. And you're welcome to contact me at 303... or, sorry, 30720-289-4719. I'll say that again. It's 720-289-4719. And again, I encourage you to go to our website at www.jeffco, J-E-F-S-C-O.us, and search for Housing Assistance Resources.
All right, that's... again, lots of great questions. We're going to take another break and talk about our third topic this evening. While we're doing that, you can always press star three and get in the queue. Commissioner Dahl Kemper is going to now continue our discussion. Go ahead.
Great. Thanks so much, Roger. In March 2021, as you may recall, President Biden signed into law the American Rescue Plan Act, also known as ARPA, a $1.9 trillion economic stimulus bill that was passed by Congress to aid in speeding up the recovery from economic and health-related effects caused, of course, by COVID-19, by the pandemic. Of that funding pie, Jeffco was awarded $113 million. To get a better understanding of ARPA as a whole and the county projects funded by it, we'd like to bring in Mary O'Neill, and Mary is the Director of Grants and Procurement for Jefferson County. Welcome, Mary.
Thanks, Commissioner Dahl Kemper. First, let's make note that the ARPA funds Jeffco received are from a one-time $350 billion award given to local and state governments to help them address impacts stemming from the COVID-19 pandemic. Our county teams have worked with the Board of County Commissioners to create programs that maintain important public services and help build a stronger, more equitable future for the county. For example, Jeffco ARPA funds help offset the economic impacts of the COVID-19 pandemic pressing needs regarding public health and safety and necessary investments in water, sewer, and broadband infrastructure.
You know, it's true, Mary, the impact of these ARPA-funded projects really were meant to be felt directly by the Jeffco community. They include infrastructure improvements, like the $28 million project to address asphalt and concrete paving. We know roads are always top of mind for Jeffco residents, as well as the construction of the 15-year Comprehensive Plan to address housing needs in the county, another issue we've been talking about tonight. In the timeline laid out by the federal government, these one-time dollars must be obligated by the end of 2020. In the timeline laid out by the federal government, these one-time dollars must be obligated by the end of 2024 and spent by the end of 2026. To get a more in-depth look at ARPA funding guidance, we encourage you to visit our website at www.jeffco.us/ARPA.
Also on our ARPA website is an interactive dashboard that shows all of the projects that have been approved to date by the Board of County Commissioners. Most recently, the Board approved $350,000 for food support in addition to 1.7 million in funds allocated last year to fight food insecurity across the county. Through a grant program, these additional ARPA funds will serve in aiding community-based food organizations working to create equitable access to nutritious, locally-produced food.
Thanks, Mary. It really demonstrates the breadth and depth of how the Commissioners, working with you and our other team leaders here at the county, have thought about allocating those ARPA dollars. Other ARPA allocations also include $1.81 million, $1.81 million intended to bolster public health services as well. Another million to increase county cybersecurity efforts, a huge issue for local governments, as well as nearly 3 million or 2.79 million specifically in wildfire mitigation efforts. And be on the lookout for signs indicating ARPA spending on infrastructure projects right in your neighborhood, like structural updates, culverts, and asphalt, concrete paving projects throughout the county and more. Mary, thanks so much for all the great information. Roger, back to you.
All right, thank you, Commissioner. We're going to get back to questions. We have about 20 minutes or so to take questions, so there's lots of time to get in the queue by pressing star three, and we're going to go to John next. Go ahead.
I feel like both Mary O'Neill and Commissioner Dahl Kemper have set up my question perfectly. You talk about grants, and you listed a number of things, including a lot of what I'll call paving projects. Is there a way a nonprofit in Jefferson County can apply for some of those funds, and what's the process?
Thanks, John. This is Mary O'Neill. Thank you for that question. I will let you know that of the $113 million that the county received in our direct ARPA award, we have set aside all of those funds for projects and programs already. We are, as Commissioner Dahl Kemper and I were talking about a few minutes ago, the food grant program. Quite a bit of that money did go to nonprofit organizations to help work on food infrastructure within the community. In addition to that, and in addition to the asphalt projects that we were talking about, another project you might be interested in is with our clerk and recorder, and they are digitizing all of the data that they have to make all of the data available online, and they're going back at least to 1952. And I heard last week they might be able to go back even further than that. So we are also going to be meeting with the Board again in May in our work session, and they will be hearing about some upcoming projects to see if they need more information on it or if we can move forward. And a couple of those, I'll just give you a teaser. One is digital literacy, and the other one is language access. But thank you so much for your question.
Okay, Rachel is next. Go right ahead.
Yes, I don't understand why we can't talk about the bike ranch. Who, what Commissioner do we call to discuss what's happening here? We have Staunton Park right up the street. We don't need the bike ranch. Who do we call and talk to about that?
Commissioner, and you might explain quasi-judicial. What does that mean?
Thanks, Roger. So this is Tracy Craftar. Hey, thanks so much. You know, we really do appreciate you asking this question. So we're in a situation now where the bike ranch people have filed their application. Once they file their application, then we kind of enter into this quasi-judicial realm where we, as Commissioners, will have to make a decision on the bike ranch based solely on the evidence that's put in front of us. But that doesn't mean that your opinion's not important. Your opinion is very important, and we really, we want you to send an email, and then we will include that in the file. That will be presented when we have our hearing. And that email address is, she's walking over here to me, the commis- commish@jeffco.us. So commish is C-O-M-M-I-S-H. Everyone thinks that's a word everyone knows, right? So commish@jeffco.us. Send us your concerns about the bike ranch. Then when we have this at our hearing, we can consider that as part of the evidence of the pros and the cons that will be presented to us when we make the decision. But thanks, we appreciate you asking the question.
Okay, we'll hear from Laura next. Go ahead, Laura.
Good evening, everyone. I'm District Three, South Deer Creek, and hello, Leslie. It's good to hear your voice, and congratulations on the incumbency, and you got my vote, and thank you also for the roads and bridges on that pothole. Much appreciated. I spoke with a woman earlier, and I had about four questions. She wanted me to narrow it down, so I'm going to start off again, and I don't, I was trying to find the right section for this regarding the safety on Deer Creek between speed cars, club racing, and bicyclists, and things of that nature. My mother and I have been up there 40 years. Her mother and I have come and gone, and now I'm a resident there. And just realize in the name of progress, there's a lot of changes, as well as neighbors that want to rezone, et cetera. And I understand progress, and I also understand sustainability. And just curious whether sheriffs are involved. I have also spoke with Chris O'Keefe a bit. Yeah.
Laura?
So, yes.
Yeah, well, first of all, let me just say it's so nice to hear your voice, and thank you so much for the kind comments. Really appreciate it. And, you know, it's so funny that you bring this issue up because I think it was just last week or the previous week, I sat down with the Jeffco Sheriff's Office, Road and Bridge, and also some of your neighbors who share your very concerns about speeding up and down Deer Creek, how we keep cyclists safe. And as you know so well, for the Board of County Commissioners, we take community safety very seriously. It's so important to us. So we're working on a couple of areas, especially given what resources we currently have to work with, always competing demands, right, in terms of the sheriff offices' resources, Road and Bridge, and more. But we did some good brainstorming with some of your neighbors to think about everything from roadside signs to help slow traffic. Jeffco Sheriff's Office is also looking at potentially an additional presence. As they're able to do that and prioritize with other areas where we see similar challenges too, Laura, as you know, with drag racing in particular. So we're working on it. Always appreciate your input, and if you have any additional thoughts for us, please be sure to reach out. Thanks so much.
Okay, we're going to go to Ariel next. Go ahead, sir.
Hi there. Thank you, Commissioners, for taking time to take my call. This is a piggyback on a previous question. I was not actually aware that Jefferson County and Jefferson County Schools were two separate entities. Could you please elaborate a little bit on how they are distinct, and sort of where the budgets come from, and how they are connected with one another? Thank you.
Well, that was not the question that I thought I was going to get, but I, so this is Commissioner Andy Kerr again. So having worked for the school district, the thing that I can tell you that is a complete overlap between Jefferson County, the county, and Jefferson County Schools is that they share the exact same geographic boundary. A little over 50 years ago, every school district that was located within Jefferson County consolidated into Jeffco R1, which is the current school district. Schools, there's a complicated school funding formula that's set by the state, and schools are also partially funded through property taxes, which are collected by the county, but then the county immediately sends a portion of those funds, about 25 cents on the dollar, straight to the school district. The school district has its own board, the Board of Education, as Commissioner Dahl Kemper knows very well, having served on that. So they have their own board and their own structure, and they are responsible for the education of students K through 12, in fact, preschool through 12 in Jefferson County now. Jefferson County, the county has all the other responsibilities that you're hearing about around Health and Human Services, around transportation, around open space, all the other discussions that we're having. Now, we do try to communicate quite a bit. Obviously, the school buses that take thousands of our Jeffco kids to school every day are on city streets, but also a lot of unincorporated parkways and roads as well. So we obviously have to provide adequate transportation systems for kids to get to and from school. And also, and I know this might partially address some of the other questions I've seen around security. Jefferson County and I believe all of the cities within Jefferson County have a very robust School Resource Officer program with our schools, and that in the unincorporated areas, we have deputies that actually work with assigned schools. They get to know the kids, they get to know the staff, they get to know the area very well, and they actually work in the schools and work with the staff and students and community on a day-to-day basis, helping to keep our schools as safe as possible. So hopefully that answers part of that. I did see you also had a question about the planetarium. That is part of the school district. I've sat in those seats myself as a Jeffco student many, many, many years ago. The district did decide that it did not have the funds to keep the planetarium open. You might reach out to them to see if there are plans, but I do know that being right next to Fletcher Miller there, that there might be some redevelopment plans for that area. And Avell, did you have a piece on this as well with the planetarium?
Thank you, Commissioner. The planetarium is in the city of Lakewood, and what I wanted to point out is that Jefferson County has a wonderful tool for anybody that's interested in development project or a street concern. You can go to our jeffco.us website, or you can Google JMAP for Jefferson County, and we have a tool there that's GIS-based, where there's different layers you can turn on and off to learn more about the jurisdictions and where they lie in regard to your neighborhood, or where you might have a question. So again, the Jeffco webpage, JMAP is a great resource. Thank you, Commissioner.
All right, we're going to go to Sally next. Sally, and all of our callers, let's try to keep it short so that we can get to as many people as we can. Go ahead, Sally.
Thank you. I'll try to keep it short. That being, in terms of growth in Jefferson County, et cetera, et cetera, there's an awful lot of unused, untapped industrial space, et cetera, et cetera. Why could that not be used for housing? Why is it that infrastructure, that is to say, police, water, 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 we are a high plains desert? Why can that not be confirmed for, say, 75, 80 years confirmation before new development is allowed? These additional costs should be turned over to the developers, the investors, and the property owners before it affects current residents, et cetera. Thank you.
Thank you for that wonderful question. There's a lot there. It really involves land use, highest and best use in infrastructure. So we appreciate that. One of the driving revenues for any local jurisdiction, of course, is its tax base, especially for counties. And we know that our industrial land and our commercial land help pay for those services for our residential areas, which helps balance out the services that local jurisdictions have to spend on things like law enforcement or plowing the roads or sidewalk installation, et cetera. And so this is a great opportunity, again, to share that the county is going to start looking at our future land use plans and how land is best used for either industrial, commercial, or housing opportunities. And we'll also be exploring with our partner agencies some of the other utilities that will be needed to serve those areas. So please visit our Planning and Zoning website. There's some opportunities where you can follow along and participate in our plans and regulations update, and we look forward to seeing you at one of our upcoming meetings. Thank you.
All right, let's go to Barry next. Barry, go ahead.
I'm very glad to be on here, and thank you very much for having this. I've got a question concerning the handicap parking, and I was in there two days ago to pay my property taxes and get my license plates renewed, and in the B.C. days, that B.C. meaning before COVID, I was able to go in and drive down to right in front of the little turnaround there by the front doors, and there were handicap spaces. And so I thought, okay, I'll go do that, because they wouldn't allow me to do it online, and I didn't want to do it by mail. So I got down there and found, of course, the big gates that didn't allow me to go down close in where the handicap place is, and I do, I am handicapped. I'm a rather, well, I'm only as old as I feel. Some days I feel a lot older than I am. But I do have a major amount of problems walking, and the best I could do, I got real lucky and got a parking place up on top right next to the stairs. But I just wonder what in the world, and I asked the lady in the office down there, why did they shut that off? And I suspected that she didn't tell me the truth, because she said, well, somebody ran into one of the pillars there that line the drive-around.
Barry, I'm going to have, I'm going to jump in and have Kate, Katie, try to, Kate, try to answer that. Go ahead.
Very good. Hi, Kate.
Hi, Barry. I'm Kate Newman, Deputy County Manager here at Jeffco. Thank you for reaching out. We did a while ago have a scare out front, and we also did a security assessment, and that was the reason behind closing that circle. But we have added 20 parking spaces underneath, so probably right below where you parked, it sounds like, that are accessible, ADA accessible, and closer and obviously not near the stairs. I'm happy to reach out to you, or you can give me a call, and if our signage was an issue, I'm happy to reevaluate that, and would encourage your feedback and welcome your feedback on that. My number is three zero three two seven one eight five six seven. Again, it's three zero three two seven one eight five six seven. Thank you.
Okay, it's Regina's turn. Go ahead.
I live in Conifer. I live in Conifer, and I have been here probably close to 35 years now, so I've seen also a lot of growth and change. And I guess, you know, I've been to many, many meetings at the Commission in Jeffco. Generally, it's due to opposition to high-density development, and I understand the need for affordable housing. You know, we're middle-class here. We're not in the upper echelon, or I don't live in a million-dollar home. And, you know, it's worth a lot more now than it was when I bought it 35 years ago. But I am majorly concerned as to why it comes up year after year after year when we have the same discussion each time for opposition, and that has to do with fire danger, wildfire, and our egress getting in and out. 285 narrows down to two lanes. If we did have a major fire, like what happened in Boulder or something. And then the other issue, again, is always water. And every time we go to these meetings, they keep talking about aquifers, which we don't have up here. We live on high-density granite. It takes years for that water to get back to the level where our wells are. And I know a lot of my neighbors are having issues with their wells drying up and having to dig deeper. And, you know, I just don't understand, you know, it takes a lot of time for us. I've sat there from 6 o'clock to midnight many days after working all day, my not being able to fix dinner for my family, because I'm at these meetings trying to say, please, stop this. And, you know, every year, it seems like it just, you know, pops up, another one pops up, and I don't understand why we can't just say, look, you know, we don't have the water, and we don't have the roads to get people in and out if there is a wildfire. Even with mitigation, you know, that's a possibility.
Regina? This is Leslie. It's so, it's good to hear your voice, and thanks so much for joining us tonight. You have eloquently articulated the many challenges that we face as county commissioners when we look at land use cases. Commissioners when we look at land use cases regarding issues like rezoning, for example. And as you know so well, there are specific factors that we have to think about when those cases come before us, and that includes water availability. Water studies are a part of that work. It includes safety for the community, including the threat of wildfire, also the compatibility of the issue that is before us as well. We've also done a lot of work through our wildfire commission, formerly our Jefco Wildfire Task Force, to look at how we can strengthen building codes related to the wildland urban interface in which you and so many members of our community live. And we're seeing continued growth and development, not just in Jefco, but also across Colorado in the wildland urban interface. So one of the things that we've done is we've tightened up our building code. So for example, if you pull a building permit, we're going to make sure that you're sharing proof of defensible space around your home, that you're using ignition-resistant materials, and more, and that's one of many things. We're also looking at, you may have heard Avell talk a little bit earlier, about our land use plans. So we'll be updating our CWPP, or our wildfire plan for the county, as well as our Comprehensive Master Plan. And we want to hear from you. We want to hear from your neighbors. We want to hear from the Conifer Area Council and others as we launch our community engagement meetings coming up this year to get your thinking about these specific areas that you've highlighted so well. You talked about affordable housing, and I'll just close by adding that I've also talked with a number of business leaders, restaurant owners, store owners, others in Conifer, Evergreen, and other areas in the foothills. And of course, as you know, one of their big challenges is how do we recruit and retain employees, because we don't have housing that's affordable. So it's an issue, please know, we're going to continue to look at. We understand there are a lot of competing demands as we talk about these issues, and we also need your help and the community's help as we move this work forward. Again, I'm just going to repeat something that Avell mentioned earlier. We encourage you to visit jefco.us, and specifically our Planning and Zoning website, which is where you can get more detailed information on upcoming community meetings. Really appreciate you bringing up these issues. Thanks, Regina.
Okay. Mike, it's your turn. Go ahead.
Hello. My question is about transportation projects. I live over in the Friendly Hills area, and years ago, there was a light at Bellevue and Alchire. That light was removed and replaced with traffic stop signs, and then there were accidents, and then now the intersection, they replaced the traffic light. Quincy and Sims, they put in a new roundabout. There were accidents, and then it was replaced with a different design. And on Quincy Avenue, it's been torn up for quite a long time. Seems like it's being torn up, replaced, and then they put in the road again, and then they tear it up again. It seems, so I'm concerned about the cost of the projects, and that the projects seem terribly inefficient and actually decreasing our safety in some ways. So my question is, what transparency do you guys provide on the costs associated with your road and bridge projects?
Carlos, do you want to take that?
Yeah. Hi. My name's Carlos Stensay. I'm with Jefferson County Road and Bridge. Those specific projects are Transportation Engineering, CIP projects, capital improvement projects, I believe. And you can get information about those projects on our, on the Jefco website at jefco.us under Transportation Engineering. If you have more questions about it, you can also request information through Q Alert, our citizen engagement platform, and we'd be happy to get specific information to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Carlos. Let's hear from Carol next. Carol, go ahead.
Thank you for taking my question. I understand the Jefferson County Commissioners are suing a woman in Kittredge to take away land she legally owns using the adverse possession law. What is your thinking on doing something like this, and how much of our tax dollars are you spending on this endeavor? I understand it's very expensive.
Hi, Carol. This is Kim Thorles. I'm the county attorney for Jefferson County, and we appreciate your interest in this case. I do want to note, however, there are a number of claims in this lawsuit, not just the adverse possession. There's a claim based on the deed language, and there's a dispute with the landowner that you're referring to as to what the language of the deed says, and that's what's before the court right now. However, I can report that the parties are negotiating a settlement, and we hope to have that finalized shortly. And once we do, we'll be able to share all the details with the community. So again, thank you for your interest in this case. We know it is impacting a number of people in the community.
All right. Thank you. What a great call tonight. Lots of great questions. We have just a couple minutes left, so I'm going to hand it back to Commissioner Kerr, and you can start us off with some closing remarks.
Yes. Thanks, Roger, and thanks, everyone, for participating in tonight's Telephone Town Hall. Tonight's topics are just a few that we highlighted to give you all a better sense of the state of our county, and we'll continue to provide community outreach on these and all subjects impacting our community. Your input is so critical in all, in all of these, so please always feel free to participate in the discussion. And you've heard various ways of doing that, coming in, participating in public meetings, giving us a call or an email. Finally, in the coming weeks, a recording of tonight's Town Hall, along with the questions and answers from the discussion, will be posted on our Town Hall site at www.jefco.us/3227-TOWN-HALLS. And of course, there's also a search option there on jefco.us to, to get there, to our Town Halls. So with that, Commissioner Krafttharp, your final thoughts?
Thanks, Commissioner Kerr. So thank you, everyone, for listening to our Telephone Town Hall. If you want more information about tonight's conversation and the topics that we discussed, or if you have further questions or we didn't, we weren't able to address your question, please visit our website at www.jefco.us. Commissioner Dahl Kemper?
Thanks so much, and thanks again to everyone for joining us tonight. If we didn't get to your question or comment, please leave us a voice message. At the end of our call tonight, you'll hear a recorded message, and then you can leave your comment or question after the tone, and someone from the team will get back to you.
Commissioners, thank you for a great call. Again, as Commissioner Dahl Kemper just mentioned, if you still have a question or comment, stay on the line. You'll be directed to a voicemail system. On behalf of our Commissioners and the staff here tonight, thank you for participating. Have a good evening.